All right. Chair, I think we're all ready to go.
We might need to turn you guys up a little bit.
You're not talking yet.
Yeah, nobody's. I heard somebody very, very softly. I heard, now that was loud, so.
Morning Greg.
Morning Greg.
Morning Greg.
Pretty good. Sorry I'm not there, people. It's all in, uh, all in good spirits though.
Okay, let's, uh, I think we're ready. Let's do a pledge of allegiance. Fall to order?
Yes.
I did it.
Okay. The pledge allegiance.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Deborah?
Here.
Hey Nancy?
Here.
Whatever Nancy's here. Lena Tucker?
Present.
Wally Shreves?
Present.
Bob Dalton?
Here.
And Nancy Patton?
Here.
So before we get started, just to remind everybody, this is a work session. So all we're discussing is what you want to see, the projects, the projects that you want to see, um, public works put on the budget this year. So I did bring a board if you guys want to use a board. Um, it's up to you guys to do that. And so we'll just let you guys take ring.
Sure. So if I understand correctly from the notices, our main focus will be talking about Upper Sankey today. Is that correct?
Well, there's other, um,
Yeah.
There's other projects like I gave you the site plan for the city hall park.
Right.
That's for, um, so anything that you think is a priority this year, um, any other park stuff, you know, if you step at Northside, that's on our sit plan. You know, any of the, so not just Sankey parks, but you know, any other item that you would like to see.
Sure.
I know the Northside has had a tree fall in there up top, I believe, um, when I was there last. It's been a few weeks ago, but you know, the wind and all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Northside's good. Ashbrook lost a really big limb. Um, but pretty much all the parks had limbs down everywhere.
Yeah, I suppose.
Okay, that's good. We'll get some of the items listed here.
Yeah, I also want to just throw out for the group real quick and I maybe Blair can back me up with this, that through discussion with council, I know they were looking at low hanging fruit and had mentioned that maybe we look at Northside next. So I don't know if that's a hard direction and, um, but I think it was suggested. Um, and as we're talking about capital projects right now in public works, we'll be vetting those pro- uh, projects with council, probably I would imagine in February sometime.
Okay.
So anyway, just, uh, I want you guys to keep that in mind.
So in that discussion on the Northside and the low hanging fruit, do you have a visibility of what that fruit is?
So I got the impression that if we look at in, and I don't have our five-year plan in front of us. Um, there's still gotta be design efforts done on Upper Sankey, right? So we're not even, we don't, we're not even ready to do anything up there.
Correct.
Um, but we have an annual budget of, let's say fifty thousand, sixty thousand. I don't know what that's gonna be this year and Brandon's not here. Um, and I know if you look at some of the things that we wanted to do, things at like Northside were cheaper. And, and so through those discussions, they were suggesting that maybe while we're designing or doing other things that if I remember right, that we maybe come in and spend the money wisely. And, and I don't think it was a hard direction. I just know it was discussed, so.
Sure. Yeah, cuz we have a ways to go and at, at Sankey Park with repairing the BMX track. And I know people were looking at a pump track that they really wanted in that area. And then the new gazebo for down the hill.
Well, our first, the first thing that has to happen is a site plan and, uh, Joe will be the one to do that, but he is tasked with some other things right now with the, um, just some other site plan, other projects. So it'll be a little bit till he can get to that.
Sure.
So what kind of projects do we want to, um, talk about for Northside?
I know we had talked about, uh, fixing the hillside, going down to the river, putting in some walking paths going down through there, some benches for people to sit at. Yeah.
Downhill.
Making it more inviting for people to want to come into that park. And I think, um, potentially looking at other things too, like we should probably look at resurfacing the tennis courts. Do we want the tennis courts? Do they want to turn them into basketball courts? I mean, I know, but I'm just, I'm just
Good question.
Looking out for everything here. I'm just, what do we want to do with these spaces? Cuz I know it's gonna need some attention at some point. Playground two.
And the basketball or the tennis court has a tree root problem right in the center of it right now. It's got a big lump that's been there for, it's been there over a year now. Which presents a problem when my son and I are playing, uh, for me, but sometimes he hits it there. I always hit it somewhere else. But, uh, yeah, that would need to get repaired, but that would be just a rip, a rip. I, I don't know if you have to redo the whole surface area to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I'm not sure either. I, I think we can cut it out and patch it. I'm not sure how tennis court surfaces are patched. We'd have to look into that more.
Yeah. Yep. Um, there is a, if I remember correctly, there is a half court basketball thing there, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Already. And I have not seen it get a lot of use.
Yeah, I haven't either.
I was just, we spent, my son and I spent a lot of time there playing tennis and I've, I have yet to see anybody on the basketball court.
What about the handball? Does anybody rat, go inside that anymore?
Yes, we do have, uh, some memberships, about a half dozen memberships for the racquetball court.
Okay.
And I haven't been in there in probably 12 years. Is it, I'm curious if it needs any work done.
Um, the floor, the floor could use some, some upgrade or repair. Um, we were in there the other day patched up where some birds had gotten in and at the ceiling, but, um, it's in pretty good shape. Besides, the floor is probably due for either resurfaced or
Yeah.
good repair.
Right. It's a wooden floor, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I would think as we go through this park and make, at the time, we do the work, paths, a little bit of landscaping, bark mulch. We, we throw painting of the building, maybe the racquetball building, inside now. And I don't know, the last time it was painted inside.
So the other thing you guys identified in this last year is putting the second dog park at Northside Park.
Yeah.
So that would be something also to consider if that's a, a direction you want, want to go.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That would make quite a chunk of our, of our budget right there, just to make those repairs and and put that in, wouldn't you say Greg?
You know, I don't even know what our budget is.
Well, I'm just saying if it's ballpark fifty, sixty, you know, the extras on top of what we have to spend to maintain the rest of it.
Yeah, well, concrete's expensive. So depending on paths, right? How much paths, uh, the ADA ramp? That alone could exceed, take that big, that ADA ramp potentially could just suck that money up.
Yeah.
Contractor to do it, um, meet grade, do it at, you know, per, and we don't do concrete and we maintain stuff, but you know, if I just think about the contract that we did for Sankey Park, all that concrete around the playground, the, the, um, plaza, that was well over thirty thousand.
Right.
But I would imagine if you have to make some forms and slope down and, and switch backs, um, I think we need to look at that.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we need to identify a budget, but I think we need to identify what we want to do there. And I, I know we had a dollar amount with an idea. And I think, I believe that number hasn't been, been revisited in a while.
Right.
So maybe we, if, if that's a direction, we start looking at Northside, we need to find out our budget and we need to probably rope Joe in and I, Blair's probably cringing right now. Um, maybe we start thinking about those things so we can get something quick. Um, any thoughts Blair?
Uh, I mean, it needs to be done, yes. Um, it's a, it's a matter of balancing the workload, but yeah.
Well, we're talking about projects and we're gonna be on that, in that budget year in five and a half months.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we're gonna be setting the budget long before that, so.
Yeah.
The question is, I mean, what do we want to do?
So I have a question for the city staff. Um, so when you guys get feedback from the community, what park do you get the most feedback about that they'd like to see things fixed?
It was Sankey and then Northside.
Northside, okay. I think, um, personally, I think sometimes why people don't go to Northside is because there's things that nobody's done anything wrong, but that needed to be fixed. It didn't get fixed. So they might just like, you know, no sense going there. There's, you know, still in the same shape it was or something like that. So, um, maybe just like we did with Sankey, if we just let them know we're moving forward and these are, you know, again, Legia to get on it and show, you know, the progress we're gonna be making and what we're gonna be doing, then more people would go there and like, um, he said that, you know, you don't see anybody using the basketball courts, but they're, they want to. You know, I know a lot of kids, Tyson and Ashley love playing basketball and they would follow it anywhere. So I just think that, again, we have to have a plus and show the community what we're gonna be doing next.
Good point.
Yeah, and I think, I think if that's the direction you guys want to go and that's what we'll push, once we determine what kind of work is gonna be done, then we'll have Legia kind of put out some sort of, um, media thing that says, you know, look for changes, you know, just like we did Sankey Park.
Yeah.
You know, so she'll probably do the, we'll have her do the same thing. It's just until we identify that, until we get started.
I do think like, um, what we wrote on the board though, cuz we, we did have that public meeting with the community and, and they were, you know, telling us those type of things that they wanted to for Sankey Park. So we have an obligation to fix that, finish that, I should say. And so I would say, yeah, both of them, Sankey Park and definitely Northside.
Yeah, Sankey this year, this coming year is gonna be more about design.
About the what?
About the, the design of it.
Oh.
The remainder of it, the design, you know, figuring out what kind of bandstand. We still need to figure out, um, kind of the maintenance, who would do the maintenance, the cost of the maintenance on the bridge. So I think this year is gonna be a lot of planning and design for the rest of Sankey. And so what Greg's talking about is what can we be doing while we're doing that design and that research, so.
And I think the, the community, when they see that, you know, what you just said, then that's okay with them. And then just keep moving forward and work on other projects.
Well, the one thing I, I, I don't want us to lose focus on, it is up there, is Sankey Park is to complete what we've already said we're gonna do there.
Right.
I mean, I was down again and, and, uh, the maintenance group did a great job on repairing those gates on the bridge. I looked at those, awesome job you guys. Uh, but look at that bridge overall, it's fallen farther and farther in disrepair. And I mean, that's where we got in trouble with the bandstand and the gazebo. We didn't have a plan in place to maintain those structures. I mean, those were since they're the thirties. So I mean, obviously environment's gonna take its toll on that design. But I don't want our bridge to end up like the bandstand. And what I'm seeing down there yesterday when I was down there walking, there's a, there's rot in the floor structures, there's rot in the upper decking of that, there's rot in the sideboards and, and, and it's gonna, if we let that thing go too far, it's gonna cost some major dollars to put that thing back. And it, to me, the investment in that, it becomes a, a, a community event center. I mean, it is utilized and I think that's well worth putting our efforts in that one.
Uh, and, and added that, I reached out, uh, last week through email to, uh, the public works director for the city of state and I haven't heard back, but I'm gonna follow up again. Probably today or tomorrow. Um, who knows holidays, they may be out. Um, so, um, we can get more on that. We have five grand. Brandon's told us last meeting, we have five grand this year. So my idea is we'll get, I'll try to get somebody out, get it inspected. Make that laundry list, see what we need to do, maybe figure out some costs with that, um, once we understand what, what we need to do. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. And I've been texting Brandon too, so.
Yeah, he's not supposed to have his phone.
And I, I think if you look back in the master plan and phase two, that's included in there, the, the structures and renovation repair, it's in there. Uh, the upper Sankey picnic area is in there, five grand. I'm not sure what that was originally, if it was just replacement of tables. Upper Sankey stairs and trail. I, I talked to Joe Grable and he was adamant that, you know, the trail systems get completed. I know there was a, a trail to be established along the waterway, an ADA type trail in there. So I think the trails, and if you look at the south trail up there, getting it tied in to Sankey Park would be something we could probably do. Because if you bring the south trail across Elm Street to where Sankey is, that's just that low cut grade through. You know, it's kind of a trail that's just a manmade trail, person trail through there. Somehow to enhance that tie-in, I think that falls into that trail tie-in system where we get the loop in there. So I don't know if we go in there and gravel's put through there or vegetation removal, but somehow to get that port tied in, that piece and connect that, I think we'll make people utilize that and tie those, that whole loop in together.
So Bob, I had a conversation with Joe and we talked about, um, as we designed, so this phase two Upper Sankey Park, that we include the trail system connecting both of them, that we include that into this phase two, so.
Definitely ties those two pieces together nicely.
So connecting those trails will be a part of this new design for the, for the rest of it, for the Upper Sankey Park.
Connecting, connecting the South Hills Trail at Upper Sankey, it, it would be a really easy thing. I mean, it's, it's right there.
I think it's important though to make sure that however we connect it, that it doesn't interfere with our plans for what's gonna go on in Upper Sankey and the overall design. Yeah.
And I, I don't know if that's a little footbridge across that thing or just a natural pour through there or something. I mean, it's a natural drainage too. So I mean, it's gonna take some engineering design to figure that out and make that nice. Uh, the gazebo was another thing down in that lower part. I know it's been kind of structurally tightened up, but I know there's a, some yet work to be done there to make that really usable ADA ramp approval, a new floor poured in there. So there's some dollars to be, I know, stuck in that area. And I don't know, on the backside of the, the bridge, the, back to the, uh, Weddell Bridge where it ties over to the high school side, how far does the city's property go to that field in there? Does it go out of ways to that white railing possibly?
You know, those trees that go, it's like from the tree line back to the creek is kind of where it goes.
Yeah.
I remember looking at that not long ago and it's enough that we could do something.
I guess I keep thinking about that. I was on the Weddell Bridge and I, I noticed there's a tremendous amount of cigarette butts laying everywhere. And it tells me a lot of people accessing that thing for the backside and smoking. And I know high school kids come into there and I don't know if some point in time, a chain link fence there with a swing gate on it. So when the jamboree's in there, if it stays there, it can be opened up and used that, but.
What I'm seeing of the property line right now is that the, the property line actually extends, the, the city's property, um, as you come off the bridge and you're looking at the high school, you know, you have the path split. If you turn right, you're right at the property line.
Okay.
Basically at the end of that ramp. If you turn left, you actually can walk a good hundred feet, um, and still be on the city property.
A little bit of an angle.
So it's, it's kind of a weird, a square that you're coming at from an angle. So we, we definitely have room for some improvements. And I, I think with the school district, uh, a relationship with them, I think they'd also be willing to, to, um, to budge when it comes to improvements on that entrance. Because really we want it to, we want it to match the other side and make it as beautiful on that side as it is on the other. It's simply not right now.
And I, I think some real thought put towards that bandstand replacement would be a major accomplishment for us, even if we come up with what that design is. Uh, we took a structure down that the public's accustomed to using every year for family reunions, weddings and other events. So to me, that's a, a good investment into Sankey Park, one, to attract people there, but also to generate some dollars back to the park system or the city of Sweet Home through events, cuz that's an event center. I mean, I know a lot of families enjoyed having that there. And, and that's something I think, you know, as a park board, we are, and, and the city, we should be committed to getting some sort of a structure put back there, cuz that, that was the draw to that park for so many years. Uh, but now with the new design equipment, definitely I see more people there. But it's also a covered bandstand. There's something that can be used during the winter months, especially for the fall harvest festival, uh, Christmas events and things that it could be utilized if it's covered. So I think it, it has a lot of value, uh, add back to the park.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I, I love all these, I, these things that you're talking about, and I think they should all be included in the design. Cuz I'd, really I'd rather shoot for the stars, uh, when it comes to the design. And then as, as funding is, is or is not available, we, we modify the, what actually gets built at different times. But I'd rather have it all in the plan so that eventually we get there.
Yeah.
So I just, we've been texting Brandon back and forth. Um, he says our capital budget for parks is probably gonna be about a quarter of a million dollars this year. Which is a lot more than I was thinking.
That'd be great.
So, um, with that said, you know, I think maybe we need to think about constructing in Dog Park and some walkways. That's like what I'm hearing from your group, why we're designing other things.
Yes.
Okay.
And maybe we include design of Sankey Park somehow and throw some dollars at that.
Um, One thing to keep.
Go, sorry Greg.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, one thing to keep in mind, and I'll be talking to Brandon about this in, in my budget proposals, is, uh, last year, we tried to get a, what's called a rare student. It's a, it's a graduate student program. Um, uh, we tried to get, uh, get into that program to have an update to our Parks Master Plan done. Uh, ultimately, we were not able to get on their project list. We're gonna try again. Um, but I'm looking at other, gonna be looking at other, other ways to get that accomplished, because our, our Parks Master Plan simply is not where it needs to be.
Yeah.
To be useful. Um, we don't have adequate standards, uh, for different, uh, park types. And so, uh, there, there should be a public outreach portion of that. Uh, and really basically, um, outlining what are the, what are the minimum, uh, standard, the minimum requirements for a neighborhood park, say, or for a citywide park and so forth. What amenities do the, do the public want? And that will inform our capital projects list as well. Of here's all of our parks, here are the amenities that need to be added to parks, here are the areas where we need to add parks in order to have every resident within a certain, uh, distance walk to a park. Uh, those standards should all be updated and in there. Um, and once we have that Parks Master Plan done, it'll inform these decisions, but also, um, it'll be, we will, uh, update our system development charge, capital projects list. So that as new development occurs and pays into that, those funds can be used for those upgrades to the, to the park system.
And I just wanted to go back and just, um, back a little bit to Bob, one of Bob's about the bandstands. So a couple of the committee members have submitted to me some design ideas, but I'm holding off on those till future meetings. So when we start talking about design, so I will be giving those to you guys to review. Um, just not for this meeting, cuz we just need to determine what we're gonna do. And then we'll get into the weeds about what it is that we're gonna envision. So, um, that is on my list of things to provide for everybody. So for the future, not for this meeting.
Sure. So one thing, if we're looking at something we can, to do next year, and I got a lot of this feedback on it, the day we were up at Upper Sankey, I don't, it's not a huge dollar figure. But the BMX track that's there needs some reconditioning done to it. It needs some actual dirt, not, and the rocks removed, like there's a pile of rock that was in front. The rocks need to get out of there. They're, they're very detrimental to accidents when you fall on the bike onto the rocks. And then just some added, the clay dirt packed into it so that it can, you know, it can actually become a, you know, a track again, cuz there's a lot of washouts in it and um, it wouldn't take a lot, and I don't think it's a big dollar figure, but it's something that needs done, cuz it hasn't been reconditioned and I don't know when. I just see it continue to drop.
Wally, when, when councillor Goble had his family's name on that, we, we did some work and went out and did a little bit more, did some spraying. And it's kind of, that's where it left.
Yeah.
If you're willing to get some people together, we can maybe talk about that and we can get some soil and some clay, brought some ripe material in.
Yeah.
Maybe use tobacco to sprinkle it around and, you know, large hands make like work type thing.
It was a, when I was up there, there was a bunch of guys that were there that at that point in time, they said, we'd love to just come and work on it.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's a, that's a problem at all.
Let's, let's do that. I, I, I mean, we can literally get, try to find some clay and do that type of stuff, um, or whatever type of dirt you, you want, material.
Yeah.
Um, so let's, let's do that. We can do that as maintenance, just until we figure out exactly what's gonna happen there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's not, like I said, it's not a big dollar figure, but it was something that several people in the community hit me with. And I've been hit with it before up there, cuz my kids take their cars up there and, and drive them around in that track and, and plus, uh, friends of ours have their BMX bikes that they ride there. And that's been a constant complaint that it hasn't been, you know, anything put back into it. And, cuz it does just fall apart over time. So, yeah, that'd be great, Greg.
So, um, when we do stuff like that, you're talking about volunteers, are the volunteers, if we get groups, are they covered? With the city, if they're there.
Insurance.
Dealing dirt and stuff like that. I mean, cuz it's true. I hear people, you know, even my own family, we, we would do all kinds of stuff. You get to go ahead.
Sure, there's a waiver form that we have people sign off on, just like anything else you do.
I'll, we'll have to get back with Brandon. I'll talk to Brandon or Julie about it and find out.
It would take a little bit of pressure off of Public Works.
I can't imagine that there isn't something like that, considering all the outreaches that I've done when I was working before, where we went to places and painted buildings and moved piles of garbage and, um, and every one of those, we signed off on a waiver sheet before we went in.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's ways to do it.
Yeah.
And I think that's really important too, for the community, cuz then it helps them have ownership, you know, it's our city, this is, you know, our BMX track, you know, we helped. You know, and they can, you know, keep an eye out too and say, hey, you know, you kids shouldn't be doing that, you know, we were, worked hard making this work.
The key for a lot of that is, uh, is having a critical mass of people who know what they're doing.
Right.
Uh, that can, that can guide the volunteers to, um, to actually be helpful rather than a, a hindrance. But I, I think you're right, the ownership part. And I, I'd love to see the high school involved because, well, especially for anything around Sankey Park with the bridge and all that stuff, cuz you know, they're the ones who see, they're the ones who walk through there and see things going on and can exert some positive pressure on their peers.
I think young people are looking for things to do, like, I forget that young man's name that put the, um, thing over, the skate park, the bleachers and the, he did that through, it wasn't Boy Scouts, it was an Eagle, Eagle something, remember that? Anyway. Yeah, so that was somebody that, you know, came out and, and used professionalism and put something in, did good stuff. So there's a lot of young people looking for things to do like that, to help.
So kind of back to our, our focused discussion, what I'm hearing is don't lose progress, keep moving forward on Sankey, what we started, especially the Upper Sankey. And we have enough details of specific projects that we've either heard for the community or they're in the master plan. So we have areas to focus on. They need the details of how and how much and what they're gonna look like behind them. And then if we're taking on a new
And then if we're taking on a new park, it sounds like Northside is getting the most input and interest from the public, the community, the commissioners. And that includes, you know, new trails, new benches, landscaping, improvements for some of the existing facilities there. Adding a dog park, we've heard that a few times. So then the third big thing was like the new park behind City Hall. Our question is, can we, can we take on one more? Or shall we put that down there on the third that really focuses on what we've already got?
Isn't that, didn't somebody donate money for the one here by City Hall?
They did, and it's, it's on hold until equipment can be ordered. So right now, right now, it's not available, so.
So it seems like the one restriction that we have is Joe.
No, not for this, because this is already designed, what's the restriction?
So that was my question. So that was just, the only problem with that was just boats in the harbor, getting the stuff on land.
The map that I gave you guys, this is the proposed layout.
That's a good way to say it, Wally.
So this part's been done. It's just all of the equipment and trying to get everything in that's been backordered for however long.
But there's still, there's. Yeah, but there's still work out there that has to be done. So the tree, tree removal has to happen, the fencing has to go in. Water lines have to be installed, um, for irrigation, if I remember correctly. Um, all of those things still have to go on. Does that sound right, Greg?
Yeah, at some point.
I mean, and, and that part there, I don't know if we need anything more than what we have already to do that. Are those executable items? I'm not saying today, but once we roll into that budget cycle, we could roll on that.
So I'm gonna be frankly honest with you guys. This was a push from outside the city to do this. And it was, so there's some influences that are helping with that, and I've kind of been out of that loop. So for me to sit here and try to give you an answer, I'm not stonewalling you, I'm, I don't have an answer on it, because I, other than sitting in kind of a design meeting and looking at what we wanted to do, that's all I've kind of been involved. Um, and so this kind of come top down through Ray into the parks. Considering counselors and outside, um, influence that want to make that happen here, so.
I mean, a lot of it was donor driven and wanting to be responsive to, to donors. And we definitely want, want to encourage that, but at the same time, um, we do have constraints on, on labor and what we have available. So, uh, we have a, we have this design, uh, it's been on hold because of equipment. I, I, I think it really, the, I, for your purposes today, determining how much of a priority this is, is going to help. Because of what is the, what is the right response when we, when we get donors? Does it change, do people have the ability to change our priorities by making a sizable donation?
Well, it sounds, it sounds like they kind of have a, not a committee, but what Greg was talking about, other people involved in it too, so.
Well, that, but, but this is the proper body for it to go through, is what, is what I'm saying. This, how does this fit in with your priorities? And then let's make recommendations to Budget Committee and the City Council on actually getting these things funded.
Okay.
I had, I had a couple of thoughts on this. So I know we've looked at, uh, so Sankey, pretty much everybody in Sweet Home knows where Sankey is. I feel personally confident, but not a lot of people actually know where Northside is.
Right.
Nor use it. If you put in a park next to the city hall on Main Street, the small park in the front with the dog park in the back. In my mind, it provides a visual park setting for this town that we don't have today. Outside of the, the little bridge park there at the front edge of town, which just looks like a pretty area. It doesn't, you don't see any community involvement in it. But if you had that beside the city hall where people drive by, then you're gonna see people come in and start using the dog park. That's gonna show the park system in town. It's a lot more visible than anything else we have.
Right.
When I, when, when that was brought up, I thought, well, that made a lot of sense to me, because people will see it. And it will change some of the view of Sweet Home from people outside of town.
And also the opportunity, if you have a kiosk showing other parks that we have, that people can go to.
I think there is a kiosk out there.
Yeah. I mean, if they, they stop for their dogs to go to the bathroom and them and whatever.
So I guess one, one thing that I've been hearing is, from, from one of you at least, is that this is a fairly high priority, uh, for the park next to City Hall. Um, from the staff standpoint, you know, like, if you look at what we've talked about, or what's on the, the board and, and think about what we've talked about so far, it can be kind of split into three different places. Upper Sankey, which we're, and, and Sankey in general, because we're talking about basically finishing the, the project, including the bridge and the paths and upper park. Um, Northside and the City Hall Park. Is that a, I mean, does that encapsulate fairly well the areas of priority in your mind?
I think so.
It does for me.
Yes.
One, one addition, this was where we were going to hold our Arbor Day event at Evergreen Loop Pocket Park. Which is, you know, buying a couple of trees, fixing the irrigation, you know?
And that's probably not quite a major enough.
No, it's, it's more just.
And I have a little bit of an update. So Lena helped me put in, uh, an Arbor Day grant. Um, so I got an email back from them this morning, which is a little bit of a bummer. So you can't put in for a grant consecutive years.
Oh.
Now, we haven't since 2020. However, they didn't allow grants last year because of COVID. So they're counting our 2020 as a consecutive year, so we can't apply this year, which I think is ridiculous. But, so we can't get that grant this year. We have to wait till next year in order to do that. And that's why we were gonna use those funds for trees for Evergreen.
Yeah.
But that was the email I got this morning, that, um, because we did in 2020 and they didn't have a cycle last year. So we won't be able to apply again for that till next year. So not that it matters on your priorities, but I just thought I would give you an update.
That's, I mean, that's a bummer. That would have been 500 extra bucks.
Yeah.
Do they operate calendar year or fiscal?
Uh, calendar.
Plenty of money.
Yeah, and really, we're only talking maybe two, maybe three, and if we buy larger trees, we're talking what, 300 bucks?
Do you think maybe the community would step in and purchase those trees? If, I mean, if you told them that because of COVID, that we didn't have an opportunity to get the grant?
Yeah, and we could even talk to those neighbors that are in that area too, to see.
With that amount of money, I think we can probably scramble it up. It's not, we're not talking about.
I think, if I remember right from Brandon, we, because this isn't next year's money, that's this year's money. And I believe we still have that in our parks budget.
We could probably find some money for trees, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Well, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, the only irrigation, so in that little pocket park, there actually is a water meter.
Yeah.
There is water there, and so it's, it's really not that big.
Right.
To run some lines to where you plant the trees, right? And it's just the trees that we want to irrigate? Are we talking about a lawn too, or?
No.
Is it just the trees?
Okay, so my, my envision is we grind the stumps out, we put in some irrigation down the center, or I'll let Sean, his crew figure that out, plant a few trees, bring some topsoil in, and, uh, plant some seed and let it kind of do its own thing. That's, that's, that's it. And let the trees grow on their own. They're gonna be watered. Um, you know, the grass can be maintained. We can, we can start getting up there and mowing it, um, through the summer. I, I can't see Sean. I don't know if his eyes are big or anything, but I'm meeting him.
He doesn't seem to be too alarmed.
Good, I like that.
So, so, so Greg, I think a, a real question for it is, is this is mid-January, Arbor Day's in April. We were gonna plant the trees. You want the water line in before the trees go in, correct?
Sean, um, you know, we're gonna have to dig, we'll have to figure out the irrigation. I don't know what his timeframe is, but if he's nodding his head, yes. Um, we will, you know, it's just the weather and rain, how muddy. Uh, we have heavy equipment, we have a tool cat with a trenching tool. It just, we'll, we'll have to get the material and do it, and I think we have most of it, so.
Are there any benches in, that are gonna be in that park?
As of, as of right now, we don't have any, um, planned for those. So we, I mean, and that might be something that we, you know, talk to the neighbors about going in. Because like for Sankey, a lot of those benches were, you know, some of them are donated, so, and those benches aren't cheap. So, and we want to be consistent with them, so, um, I mean, that's something we can look at. I think right now, you know, the trees doing that part of it, and then we can look at benches and stuff later.
There was a concrete pad there with a concrete bench, and we removed that. I don't know where that bench went. I know we had some damage at Sankey, maybe they moved it there. Um, but we'll have that discussion internally. It had a bench. So I think Public Works needs to figure out how to return at least a picnic bench there.
Cause the concrete pad is still there, Greg, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have a, a nice space for some type of picnic table feature.
Yeah, and I do have, so Lena sent me the samples of all the trees that she pulled, and I actually reached out to that company for costs. And they actually sent me a price list of just, you know, what's available and a price list, so we can use that to determine what size and what the cost is. And then we can, you know, figure that out, you know, pay for that this year. So I do already have that, because I was trying to figure out for the grant, how much we would need for the grant, how many trees we could plant. So, um, so that would be really easy to kind of figure out. I can work with Lena, we could figure out what sizes and look at the list of availability that they have and kind of go from there, so.
And it's also, we need to do a site visit, just to see where the irrigation's going and just look at the space. Decide what do we want there.
And I can also, yeah, as it gets a little bit closer, you know, maybe March, well, yeah, it would have to be in March. Um, send out some kind of notification to the neighbors right in there and let them know when we're gonna be doing something there. And then have them come out and help put the trees in, or, you know, kind of like what we used to do for Arbor Day. So, and we can reach out to them and kind of have them be involved.
So I have a question out. I would think it would pertain, but anyway, we used to have the adoptive park. I know we're supposed to do the, well, we sometimes still go down there and pick up trash and stuff, but Sankey, you know, the skate park, so do we still have that? Cause I was thinking about, you know, like this evergreen adoptive little park here.
So the actual program was not successful. There was only a couple of people that adopted parks that actually followed through and did what they were supposed to do. So we determined that, um, to not have that program anymore and just come up with. And they've hired, you know, a bunch more of the Public Works guys since then to kind of maintain and do that part of it. And part of it was because we didn't have a crew to go in and do some of the small stuff. So, um, I mean, I know, this is my group did Sankey Park, so, um, so that's not a program we have anymore. And if there's something eventually that we think of that might be a better alternative to that, we can entertain it.
You got, and one thing I just wanted to suggest. Somebody else talking?
No.
No, there's, there's.
Then echo.
Okay, um, may I suggest that as we're thinking, have that discussion on grants? That if we're gonna go back, we've already made a good impression to that, that, that group. That let's get everything finished for Upper Sankey and the walk paths, the bridge. Let's get it all designed, and then let's gear up for that grant. Because those grants are still gonna be much less than the Portland, the Salem's. And, and I think it would give us a good shot on our rebound to try to get another one, especially the success we've had. So if we're gonna go, let's go big and try to get more money for that park and complete it.
So the grant cycle, you, um, so far has been consistent. The grants have to be in by April 1st for those big, um, Oregon Park grants. However, as I've said, until we are shovel ready like we were last time, I don't want to even start that. Cause it's a, it's a long process and it takes a lot of work to get that grant done. Um, and so being ready to go, and we can start doing some small things. Once we start getting design, I can start putting stuff together like we did last time. Um, but you know, we still have to, we'll still have to have a match. Um, and I think it's 40% match, I think, if I remember right. So we still have to figure out how to do fundraising for a match, um, and do all that. So that's something, instead of only having a month to do that and figuring out match stuff like we did last time, we need to start that way in advance, so.
No, I suggest, why I'm saying is, we talk now, we plan next fiscal year. We get that plan done and prepare for the following year, 23, right? To submit in 23 possibly.
Essentially a year from this April.
Yes. So we have this year to design and put the grant together, submit it in April.
Yes.
So, yeah, I would like to challenge the, the committee, if we want to put in for next April. So I would like to have at least, so if we're gonna get donations from, um, community, you know, start that maybe, you know, four or five months in advance.
Yeah.
So we can, so we can do that, and then we can start going from there. So by this next fall, have our plan ready to go, which, you know, obviously we'll have to get Joe Lombard to do a site plan. Um, but that's, um, that would be my challenge to you guys, is to kind of make that a goal, is by next fall. And then we can start doing the community outreach for that.
Yeah.
And then that way, it's not so much pressure to try to get it done right at the last minute.
Yeah.
So for the financials for this upcoming, the one we're talking about, they start in July, is that correct?
This coming fiscal year, you mean?
Yeah.
That's July 1st, yeah.
Yeah, so the money that we're gonna spend in July, if I understand, our recommendation was, correct me if I'm wrong, and feel free to correct me. The work, some work in Northside, depending on what we can have, Joe has time to actually put together, because Greg has to be able to put it in. And I know like the concrete, you can't do that in the rain, so.
We'd be hiring out for that anyway.
Yeah. I, I know, but it's still always, there's always some Greg part of it before that goes out. So, and then we also gotta get on a calendar for somebody, and everybody else knows it's, it's summer months only. So unless Joe does something with it pretty soon, if history's correct, it won't, you won't get there.
Well, the only part that Joe has to do would be maybe designing where the trails go. You know, as far as fixing the tennis courts and that kind of stuff, that's already there. So we don't, we don't need him to do any designing for that part of it, so.
Yeah, so.
The dog park and, uh, and trail system essentially are the, the amenities that we want to add to that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then to do this park here, next to the City Hall, with the playground in the front and the dog park in the back. And then it's gonna have be some cost, I'm assuming, to do the, uh, Upper Sankey design and research?
Yes, we have a, we'll have to hire this wonderful 3D rendering person to do that part of it for us again. Um, you know, and, uh, there'll be some, you know, mostly staff time figuring out costs and different, you know? Um, we also have the, a single stall bathroom that's gonna have to go up there, so we'll have to figure out the cost for that and that type of thing, so.
Maybe we research what the cost would be to do a schematic design from an outside party. What does that cost?
Yeah.
You know?
So at one of our last meetings we had, we talked about, um, remember more trails coming from over, off of 18th Ames Creek? And then they were gonna go into Sankey Park. We did talk about that.
Oh, through that area behind the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that considered part of the Sankey Park, or that's totally a different?
I think that, that's probably gonna be a different, because, um, we can do that as kind of a trail connectivity later on. I think we should focus on the actual park part. I mean, that's.
I agree. No, I agree.
My opinion, that's, it's totally up to you guys, but.
Well, the updated Parks Master Plan should include a trail plan as part of it. Where those trails would be going as much detail as we can get.
So those three things, did I miss anything for July to the end of June in 23? I think that's your recommendation from the committee.
Did you get that, Greg?
Sure.
Yeah, you and, you and Blair will be putting this together as far as the budget committee. And I'll give you guys the, I'll send out the minutes, so you have it all, but.
Yeah, and then maybe next week we could vote on it.
Yeah, so that'll be, that'll be on the agenda for next week, so.
Cause we're all here and we can't.
So Angela, I have a question though. So if we do start in the summertime requesting the community to help out for, um, fine, fixing the rest of the park, uh, are we gonna have to decide how to do it? Like you did last time, you had a forums and stuff for us?
So what we'll probably do is when we're ready for that part, um, we'll work with Legia again, we'll, um, get the word out. Um, you know, we'll, we know what to do this time, so we'll have a, probably a better idea of how to do it. Um, but we'll coordinate with her, um, to get it out, you know, in the newspaper, in our Facebook page, all of that type of stuff. So, um, So, um, whenever we're, when we get to that point where we're ready to start soliciting, because people are going to ask, what are we going to do? So we need to have something in place to show them or tell them. So, um, and then we'll, um, as staff will work on that of how to get that out to the public and then, um, have you guys help with that kind of dis- distribution of that.
Okay.
And Greg, I, I foresee, you know, people that come out volunteer, there's no heavy equipment in our park. We would come and deliver some material. People show up, maybe some wheelbarrows, shovels, rakes, and we start dispersing that material around. We could even, with our equipment, move it around as necessary, but then put the, put the equipment away because there's going to be just, you know, it'd be like herding cats. You just need to let people use small hand tools. And I, I don't see it any more than that, so.
I agree. Is that a May timeframe? Does that sound?
Uh, you know, it's up to you guys. When you can get everybody together, I, I don't have a dog in the fight. I just, I think you let us know and we'll support it.
I don't think doing it when there's massive rain going on is a good idea because it's just going to wash away. It needs lot, it needs, you know, water and dry.
How about a June thing where, where, where it's done, it gets noted prior to the summer. It gets fixed up and then gets a little publicity and then kids get to use it throughout the summer.
Yeah. I would agree with that. If that works in your timeframe.
Sure, late May, early June, we'll catch a, catch a string of sunny days.
Yeah.
Yay.
Okay, so I have on here, so, um, and I'll put it on the agenda for next week's meeting and you guys can vote on it officially. Um, so your recommendations are work at Northside Park, the city park, dog park, um, and then Upper Sankey Park, including, you know, the designs for, you know, the bridge, the bandstand. Possibly looking at, um, finding, seeing what it would cost to hire an outside person to complete the design. Those are your priorities.
Yes.
For this coming fiscal year. Okay, so I will put that, get that all in the meeting minutes and then make sure that Greg and Blair have a copy of that to bring to the Budget Committee. And I will try to get them done and get them on the agenda for next year, the minutes or next meeting. So you can also vote on the minutes for next meeting too.
Sure. And in our meeting next week, can we make sure that we have a, a bit of time to talk about the, uh, Arbor Day?
Yeah.
Because I, I want to make sure, and I don't have any problem running this to ground. If we're going to do it, I would like to have some, um, vendors there or some people that are, I'll call them horticulturally minded. So we have several places around here that sell trees, plants, bushes, flowers and to try to drive that a little bigger than we've had.
Yeah, Alice used to bring
I know.
a table with plants and stuff to sell.
Yeah, but I think, I think we're missing the boat with the people that actually do it. They should be a part of that. And that would also help because if they advertise that at their business, that they're going to be there, it might drive a little more participation.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's start our planning and our
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll make sure. I think it is on the agenda, but I'll make sure.
Okay.
And have a little bit of snacks there or something, you know, invite the neighborhood, pass out the flyers. I don't
CBD gummies or something.
Yeah. Coffee. Can get Dutch Brothers to donate.
Okay.
Anything else for the discussion?
Well, just one thing. I just want to say it's a new year and I, I've been doing this with this group for a little over four and a half years. And this group is working extremely well together. And so I just appreciate your guys' efforts, so.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate you and your staff.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. All right. For the good of the order, we're done.
All right. Thanks a lot.
It did work.
Yes.
Hey, Greg?
Bye y'all, see you next week.
Greg, I have
Yes.
I stopped by one time. He was selling an RV and